To act sand and gravel areas. Uh suitable for a public water supply. And the one on Elton Road is the single aqua protection area in town. It meets those criteria. It's a sandy gravel. Lands, if you will, that is suitable of storing sufficient water for a public water supply. It is used as a public water supply. And therefore it is deemed aqua. And it's subject to the Aqua Protection Regulations. Those areas are mapped very carefully. A very elaborate hydrogeologic study. They're very expensive, as Mr. Or- Orwell said, I believe. The firm I work for has done. Many of the level eight maps in the state of Connecticut. That said, I don't believe we are associated with the. So. The, uh, as you see, the, the regulations in town were adopted in twenty thirteen. Year two, maybe three before that, Connecticut D P. Developed in conjunction with D P H model regulations for all the municipalities to adopt that had aqua protection areas. Most municipalities simply adopted the model. Um, regulations. I believe Berlin was one of them adopted. The, if you look at the map that shows the aqua protection area. And it's specifically the Elton Road one. I, I think if you look. On the right hand side is the Elton Road Aqua Protection Area. Over on the left, you see a couple of the, the Southington ones. Uh, I think show up on that map. But if you look specifically Elton Road. And you'll see some of the land uses in the area. Starting in the south of Silver Lake, you have. Railroad line. You know freight travels back and forth there, right through the air protection. You obviously have roads, you have stormwater outfalls, you have houses, you have lawns. There are always very rich fertilizers. You have swimming pools. Swimming pools, highly chlorinated water. Um, you also have a high pressure gas transmission pipeline that runs right through that area. Now you think, oh, it's just gas. But inside of gas transmission pipelines, you have condensate. That has to be collected periodically. And I think immediately north of site. There's, I don't know if that's a compressor station or a condensate trap, but there is a facility along. Chamberlain Highway immediately north of twenty one oh seven. So, you know, kind of summarize. We're not in, we're not even near the, the Elton Road Aqua Protection Area. The, the area of the site can't be deemed an aqua for under the regulations because it is not a sand and gravel. Uh, lens or glacial outwash that is suitable of supporting a public waters. And even if we're. We're agricultural use. It is not prohibited. It's not regulated. Uh, it's, it's an acceptable radius within and the maps. Water jets, surface water. Just a couple of things to put it up. The. We are located in the Medivac River Subregional Basin. Number seven. The hatchery is not even in the same drainage basin as we are. Uh, the hatchery is located in Belcher Brook Subregional Basin. Both basins drain the Medivac City. So. Twenty one oh seven drains through the Medivac Sub Basin to the Medivac City. Medivac City flows downstream and it, that's where the, uh, the Belcher Brook. Subregional Basin drains into the Medivac. Couple of things about hatcheries. So hatcheries. This one in particular, they bunker on water, they use that as their. Their water for bone fish. Raising fish. That's a discharge under state regulations. State hatcheries have never been granted discharge permits because they can't be. Granted discharge permits because they can't meet the F P D S, the National Discharge Standards. The water coming out of hatcheries is too high pollution. The state would have to shut down all their own hatcheries. Know that because I'm good friends with a permit writer that looked into it for thirty five years. All right, onto what hydroponic. Growing is, so this is closed loop. No water being discharged. It's closed loop. Saw in video when one of the tracers lifted up, the water was moving pretty good. It's under constant circulation. In tables that are elevated above the ground. There's no discharge to the ground. There's no discharge to a sanitary sewer. There's no discharge to a storm sewer. It's a closed loop system. Yes. He uses about ten thousand gallons of water a day. Seems like a lot. Spread over the acreage of the greenhouses. It really is. I think we're all familiar with what a sixteenth of an inch is. It's small, right? Take three quarters of that. Spread it over the square footage of the greenhouses. That's ten thousand gallons. Think how much you water your plants around the house in your garden. You'll use a lot more water than that. Closed loop systems versus field farming. Using ninety percent less water. It's very efficient. So, I think here in Connecticut, you guys know better. I think we get about forty or fifty inches of rain every year. Uh, then, then the, the quarter or the, I'm sorry, the sixteenth of inch. It must be about twenty inches. So, we're not even using what falls on the park. So ninety percent less irrigation water. Eighty-five percent less fertilizer. Why is that? When you're out in the field. You're casting fertilizer on, you're doing it early in the growing season. Can't necessarily spread fertilizer once the corn is grown. And so you want to make sure all the fertilizer is down there. Problem is too much fertilizer for instance, vegetables, right? We've all overpet and fertilized something. So in order to get around that, or field farming is a slow release. Slow release means the granules are coated in either a sulfur compound or even plastic, is this. So that fertilizer release is very slow. What that means is, you know, you put it down, it's a lot of fertilizer. In the rains. Uh, that gets swept away. Also, early in the season, the wind blows, it blows away. You don't have that. Let's get exactly the fertilizer they can use. No more, no less. That's all taken care of with instrumentation, probes, sensors. If we could. Do exhibit nine and exhibit ten.
There's a lot of homework there. You know what that means, right?
The first is just a highlighted version of a paper in the American Scientific Research Journal for Engineering Technology and Sciences. It's actually kind of interesting. It talks about. Hydroponics, aeroponics, and aquaponics. I'm also helping someone develop a fish farm. Here in Connecticut of all places. So there, there's the scientific paper. Uh, that has all the stats that I just rattled on. And the photographs are of the go facility. You see how the beds are elevated off the ground? Maybe those is giant, like, I don't know, goldfish ponds. There's a liner. You know, the, the intent obviously is to not waste any water. And I know the town engineer had a question. He was thinking it was not the closed loop system. Where it was a drip irrigation hydroponic system and the excess water would go into the ground. That is not the case. And I spoke to him personally and, um. That he understood much better. You, uh, that it is a closed loop and water is simply added and fertilizer is added as needed. A question came up a little bit earlier, but what happens if the beds have. The state permitting process allows for a couple of options. But the, the one that would be most appropriate here is that water will be transferred into, into trucks. And haul either to N D C's wastewater treatment plant. Right in the haven wastewater treatment plant. It, it's a sewage compatible waste water. It's essentially plain old water. But it wouldn't be discharged just there. That just, um, the state doesn't allow it, first of all. And it would go to a sewage treatment P O T W that can handle whatever the road transfers. Frankly, it's also the cheapest way.
Can I ask come up and then done?
I think in Guilford, it's never been done. So, uh, and that's been years, six years. So there's no real need to do it. I mean, it's. Could it happen? Yeah, probably. Has it happened? No. If it, if it did, that water would simply be drained and then all the way it wouldn't be discharged.
Why hasn't it never been done? Shouldn't, shouldn't it be done as just a, a practice to make sure everything's clean? If, if there's potential for contamination.
But if it's not there, it's, it's not there.
But how do you know it's not there? I guess that we see that. Do you test the water?
Of course, yeah, the, the water is tested on a regular, uh. On an ongoing basis, we have systems and, and sensors that sense all the stuff that's going on in the water. And computerized controls over how much fertilizer gets put in, how much water gets put in, everything is. Completely controlled on an ongoing basis twenty four seven.
Do you monitor your computers to make sure everything's functioning properly and they're up to date and the system and the software is up to date? How could you monitor that?
They're twenty four seven on.
The computer is off.
Yes. Keep in mind, the water's move. You know, moving water tends to stay cleaner than stagnant water. So. Last thing to touch on, uh. You know, if. If you look at the fertilizer you use in, in the yards. And in, in field farming. Typically, yeah, I, I talked on, um, slowly these fertilizers. The fertilizer is usually ammonia based, uh, or urea based fertilizer. Um, if you look at the, the Scotts Turf Builder bag, you'll see ammonia and urea. Both those things are. They're. The ammonia, when it gets into the soil. The microbes transform it to nitrites. Nitrite hangs around a little bit. And can run off. Nitrites are very harmful to water. This sort of microbes also convert the nitrite. Into nitrate. Plants can't uptake nitrate. So if there's excess nitrate, it washes away, blows away as dust. Plants uptake nitrate. H two O being hydroponic, nitrates are more soluble. So fertilizer is used. It's immediately accessible. For the plants to uptake. Nitrites, yeah, not having any discharge. Nitrites are far, far less toxic to fish than nitrites. So, overall, even the choice of fertilizer is better for the environment versus a, a conventional. I have copies of Scotts fertilizer labels if you want, but you can probably go home and look. So with. And, uh, so the, the, the mixing. Occur in the heads. Dedicated area, concrete line, front. Much more protective than mixing fertilizer out in the middle of the field. You know, it's just, I see it from time to time when we're, we're. Taking agricultural land and turning it into houses. Which is no good for anyone, but that's beside the point. And you always come across the barn with stuff that's been there for thirty years. And some scary stuff sometimes, D D T, E D P, yeah, E D B, uh, D E. Chloride, indolent, you name it. Cornfields. Usually D D T, you can count on that. Portraits, yeah, arsenic, delger. Sometimes chlorine. Old houses, houses before like nineteen sixty. You look around the foundation, you will find chlorine. And a lot of it. My point being, you look in any old barn. You will find old bags of stuff sitting on dirt floors. That's what farm, uh, field farming is all about. You look in the garage that's out there right now, you will find some things used for like growing evergreens and whatnot. That are no longer used for reasons. Still sitting like dirt floor. It's not. With that, I will.
Thank you. I guess you gave us a lot of homework here.
But just a few, a few minor closing remarks, I mean. There was a question about trucks. The operations of the greenhouse won't create outside noise other than. Two hundred and thirty trucks a day. Picking up product during daytime hours. You don't have artificial light for our lights. Regulations in your zoning, uh, text amendment does not allow us to light the greenhouse at night. We're required to have a motion sensor for security, for a security light above the door. That's all, that's all the outside lighting. So it was asked that we not have trucks between five P M and seven A M, seven A M. We won't have trucks between five P M, probably eight A M. It was asked that we put. Natural barriers. It's a lot of trees. We already have that on our stick. All of the, we, all of the requests by the neighbor right behind us, we're complying with. We're already doing those things. So let me conclude this. We want to, we want to thank the public for their. We want to thank you, the commissioners, for your patience in allowing all signs to be heard on this issue. We especially want to thank the commission staff for their hard work over this past year and a half on this issue. At the end of this evening, there'll be time to you to, for you to vote on the site plan. Want to leave you with this. The site plan complies with all aspects of the zoning. We're not asking for any variances, special exceptions to the zoning requirements. All town department comments have been satisfied. We have addressed every concern raised by the public and this commission. You have a legal obligation to approve. Application. Looks forward to your approval.
I mean. Go ahead. I beg to differ in that, um, this commission really has not. Had an opportunity to ask you the questions that we have. And looking at the time and the other applicants that are waiting. Um, yes. Well, no, 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 I, and, and as Diane said, uh, she just stated. The commission has questions and we haven't had any input on this week and just taking it as well. So, all right, um, the hour is late. We got more information than I need to look through this. And, uh, also I don't know if you want to, um. I know that you, the applicant has pointed out that we're supposed to make a decision on this tonight. But I don't think I'm prepared to do that tonight. Um, wholly because of all this new stuff you gave me. Um, so what does the commission, uh. Feel comfortable with doing? Should we keep the public hearing open? Should we close the public hearing, knowing that when we come back again? We're going to have to have all of our questions answered. And I think that, um. I mean, I just want to know.
So this is the site plan.
Hold on.
Site plan, sorry.
I'm sorry, this is a site plan and application, so you're bound to making the decision in sixty five days. They've granted an extension. To get to this meeting, the public hearing has to be held, uh, scheduled. If you held an elective public hearing, has to, was, um, was fitting within that sixty five day deadline. Except they granted the extension. Um, there. So unless extensions are granted, and that can be either to keep the public hearing open. Or you can choose to close it and they could grant an extension to. For the decision, but again, as Chairman Veely stated. Just restate the clarity that you want to ask your questions so that you could have that dialogue before you close the public hearing. Yeah, staff can advise you on what information we already have and perhaps some technical. Issues, but we also would not be able to give you, you know. The new information, generally speaking, except for in direct, in response to a question you'd asked us.
Okay. Go ahead. Well, here's my question for Maury, is, um. Um, the gentleman had so kindly kind of highlighted or summarized that they've met all the requirements and they've complied with the plan. Requirements and live occupation. Is that you're understanding that they have. Fulfill their responsibility for our requirements of the town.
They, um, so analysis done and, and, um, reports, um. Or comments provided by other staff departments as well as. Um, the planning and zoning department and the, um, staff report we gave you, um, the. It is, is, we, we raise no issues. However, the commission makes the decision. That's why site plans are for the commission. But it is, uh, site plans are based on the criteria of. Uh, of the regulations.
But in, in see, because we're in a vacuum here, because none of the commissioners have had a chance to participate with the questions with the applicants. So because, because we've been listening to them respond to the public. We haven't had a chance to sit and, and have, have a nice chat with them about the project. To rest, so that we can make the decision on how to proceed. Okay, so with that being said, I guess perhaps the best thing to do, well. The quandary is, is that. We really can't.
More discussion, I'll make a motion to.
Well.
Well, you gotta give. Commissioner's question that recommend.
Can you please set up when you speak? Can you please set up when you speak?
Tim, you probably can't be heard. Uh, it's, it's hard to hear you.
Yeah, uh, all right. What, okay, hang on, hang on, hang on.
I have a motion to, uh, vote the public hearing.
Okay, so we have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a, a second?
I would recommend against that, as the commission still has questions, I would say ask those questions.
Okay, so I don't have a second, so that motion failed. That motion failed.
If, if I mean.
Yeah.
My concern is. There are questions and I know I had like a couple of questions. There were some. Questions that I don't feel were fully.
Yeah.
But my concern is that we might not get those answers, it seems like.
But what, okay. What the, what the problem is, if we close the public hearing, then we can't have a nice discussion and ask their questions to get more information from the applicant. Now, if we keep, if we keep the public hearing open, I believe they have to give us an extension.
May I, may I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So because this is a site.
Yeah.
Granted a public hearing for the public to make comments, which we have responded to. Can. Check with your counsel, I think she's still on.
Yeah, Jennifer is here.
Even apologize for her.
No, that's okay.
I believe you can close the public hearing and I believe you can ask us questions. Because you can ask us questions in a cycling application without having a public hearing. And therefore you can close the public hearing and still ask us.
The point is, this is Attorney Capola, that, but the point is, is that it, it is a public hearing. And once they close the public hearing, they should not, they should not be taking potentially in new information. That all parties participating in the public hearing have not had an opportunity to ask questions about or respond to. I, I totally disagree with that, Attorney Monch. Process. I think that that's, uh, uh, bordering, you know, you're asking for, that, that's not appropriate.
Okay, so what we do is.
That's, that's, you've chosen to have a public hearing. Uh, the information needs to be received in the public hearing setting to have all. The point of it is to, to give the opportunity to all interested parties. Um, to be able to, to ask questions, to respond to, uh, what's presented. All the way around. I don't, I, I don't agree with that at all.
Okay.
Just for the record, uh, we did not ask for a public.
Well, but, but the point is, is that they held one, which by statute.
All right, my, my dilemma is that you're asking us to make a decision tonight. And I'm going to say if we're going to extend the public hearing for the, for the, for, for the purpose of the commission participating with you, okay? So if we're going to do that, then I'm going to need an extension.
So let me do this. You still have one more, I believe, one more public hearing to go to. On your agenda, am I correct?
Yeah, and then I have to go back and.
Can I, can I confer with my clients while you do that?
Uh, yes. Well, actually, yeah, because we can go back on their old business.
Someone should make, uh, motion to pause this public hearing, but the you, you intend to reconvene it this evening. For, for that. So you can skip to the next one and then go back. Yeah, that's.
Yes, second, all right. Okay, so we have a, a motion by Mr. Rogan. We have a second by, uh, Ms. Dorothy. I know it was a tie for second. Um, I'll go that way. And, uh, so, and.
Our, our next thing on the public hearing.
All right, so all votes in favor, or I? So moved, okay.
Thank you.
We have a discussion, yes, okay.
Thank you.
We have a discussion and. All right.
Let, let's go, let's go.
Can we send out at the next meetings? Because that's, that's in the, uh, the only way we're wasting time.
All right, text amendment for the multifamily moratorium extended for another six months. Yeah, we'll just do it really quick. Uh, the text amendment application for the zoning, uh, to extend the moratorium. Regarding multifamily development application for an additional six months to August eleven twenty point three.
Motion to extend.
Okay, motion to sign by Mr. Digma.
No, you have to, no, no, the, the public hearing, you have to have your.
Basically, what this says is that, uh, we're asking that we're extending moratorium on projects for multifamily development. And right now, this moratorium, uh, expires the end of February. And we're asking you to go to August eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the purpose being is that our staffing has been understaffed, and was just recently, been brought up to snuff. And that we have so many applications you can see on the board that we are literally getting overwhelmed, which is why you have, you know, Quantum over here, we have the H two farms here, and then we have other stuff, and we have, uh, Whole Fest here with Starbucks. And all these projects take time to get through, and that's why we looked to the moratorium, and that's why we want to extend. Does anyone wanna come in, uh, this is a public hearing, yes.
Can I, can I just add to that, that in the, um, decision for the moratorium and that text amendment that was approved back this past August, you, you did have a public hearing for that, and you stated the reasons, and I'm gonna add, I don't have it right in front of me, now I'm sure it's in this pile, but I really don't wanna get rid of the H two Ohio. Um, it includes that we're working on the P O C D, the committee is working, that's gonna be due. Um, and is incorporated in the considerations of the P O C D are the considerations from the Affordable Housing Plan that was, um, was developed by the town and approved by the town, and therefore the extension and the moratorium allows for consideration of these documents that are, are being developed and the study, so that decisions with regards to how to proceed with your, um, multifamily development regulations will be, hopefully will be reflective of some study that is being done actively at this time.
Okay, all right, well put, and that's the reason why. So hearing, no one from the public, um.
I'll make a motion to the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Roger, and then we have, Andrea, thank you. All who's in favor, aye, 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 so moved, okay, on to old business, site plan.
We go back to the business, you have to deal with.
Oh, okay.
I think you can. I think you can.
Okay. Oh. Long run.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, so we wanna make sure that your answer, your questions are well answered. Um, when is the next hearing?
January twelfth.
Jj, 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 jj. Yeah, January twelfth.
January twelfth.
Okay. So we will give an extension to January twelfth under your invitation.
Okay.
That, that hearing will be for the purpose of the commissioners asking questions to us.
Yeah, and I would propose to Maureen at this time, because I know that we may have people who come in are interested in our deliberations that we made that, like, one-on-one public hearings that night.
Thank you.
So we don't have the lateness of the hour effect.
Um, I just wanna, as a point of order, and, um, and as recommended and, well, advised as well on at the last year, or even just now, and at the last hearing, if public hearing is kept open, um, you wouldn't be, eh, you shouldn't, I guess, would be the best terminology, um, preclude response from the public as well, because it is to hear the additional, to hear the questions, it's still a public hearing, so you still have that forum. Um, I would perhaps suggest, um, that there's been a lot of testimony heard, there's been a lot of comments heard and asked for, you know, the, the respect of not repetitive comments. It's a continued public hearing, so as you stated at the beginning of the public hearing, create testimony from previous dates are all part of this same marathon public hearing, for lack of a better word, and that the, um, and that you can, it's in, in your purview to limit, um, speaker time.
Yeah.
So succinct, if there's new or changed information to offer, um, just, I would suggest you ask for that respect.
Yeah.
But not.
Yeah.
Not eliminate the possibility of the public speaking.
Yeah, exactly, so it would be ninety percent awesome, ten percent, rather than to have something we can provide or whatever, raises the concern. Okay, so we're all in agreement with that. So we can just have a motion now.
I'll make the motion to continue to the January twelfth.
Twelfth, no, twenty twenty-three, we have a motion by Mr. Rogan, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jersey, for the discussion on this, all who's in favor, aye, aye, suppose a move, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we'll see you, hey, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, see you next time, all of you. All right, you know what, take a, do you need a quick break while the room clears?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah. Two minutes. Then we're gonna get back to everybody.
Hold on.
All right, so we're on to old business, first item is a special site plan application for Quantum of Berlin to LLC for the proposal for both complex and related site improvements on Torrid Road. Okay, all right, so, um, commissioners, what are we talking on this? I know we've had a lot of testimony about it, um, I know we had some concerns. Um, we have concerns about, uh, the, the lighting, we have concerns about the traffic. Uh, we have concerns for the neighbor about noise, matter of operation. Um, what are, what are your thoughts on the application side?
All right, I'll jump right in, um, it sounds like it's a really great program, it looks like it's been successful already in another low-key thing. As a Berlin resident, I'd love to welcome something like this into our community. Um, I believe that they've addressed some of those concerns already. I'd like to kind of throw my support in a way.
Are you making a motion?
No, I wanna close the conversation.
Okay, all right. So, um, anyone else?
Yeah, I think that, uh, the applicant, uh, addressed all the concerns. Uh, we address concerns, the only concerns that was left right now is basically the, uh, cars on the street. And that is, uh, police commission, uh, pretty, you know, signage or anything else that may be needed. Uh, traffic report says that it's gonna be a problem. Uh. So I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Uh, with, uh, staff's comments included.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, you have a second.
I ask for a couple of conditions.
All right, you're, so you're gonna do your second with, uh, discussion.
Yeah, second for discussion.
Sure, and now you're gonna.
Um, I think one of the conditions is that they work with the police department to address, uh, traffic concerns. I've been willing to put a warning sign, maybe a few things a little bit further. I, I, I understand we're gonna, I remember with the fear of speed on back, and like a ramp, but I think it works at the high school. Obviously, you wouldn't wanna put it at the top of the hill.
So you frequently call them traffic calming measures? And then that leaves them to their part of the types of measures, so that might be.
Things like the applicant just wanted to put some money in there as far as putting up signs, so it's that they work with the police department to figure out traffic calming measures. It is definitely apparently a problem that people drive too fast, um, in that area. Uh, I would, I know that he said when he sold the property, that there need to be movement for overflow parking, I think that movement should be, um, in writing from day one.
Yeah, signed all parties.
Signed by all parties. And then the hours, um, I definitely don't wanna leave those hours open for interpretation. Um, but, I mean, I definitely think that we should. I would like to see nine p.m., but I mean, it's the commission's.
Well. I think he was talking about originally, it was gonna be eight a.m. to eight p.m. because they have the children off for youth sports.
Yeah, and then two hours of.
Yeah, so what you're saying is back it up to like an eight a.m. to nine, nine p.m., and then place has to be closed at nine p.m.
Hey, and, I, I'll look back at my notes, and you, you can look at yours, I think they said nine, the, the last session at nine, at eight, to get the kids out by nine. I think that's what the last kid's session started at eight. Stop it at nine, I, I let me double check my notes and make sure.
I thought.
Did you hear different?
Ends at eight, but they might hang around.
Well, they were saying, yeah, there was.
And then if they reconsider, if the parents wanna come.
Well, the parents have it like the whole time or whatever.
Well, I'm thinking that maybe the condition is that with a youth program, the courts close at eight p.m. you're allowed to stay open to ten for adults. You don't have to take the kids out of the building to be that they're with the adults.
That's what the.
Yeah, that was the, that was kind of what I.
I just wanna get the hours on.
He wants to do it on record.
I want the hours on record, that way you don't have like other facility where it's more, which I didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Opinion on that, I, I, I'm a little concerned about, if we're willing to have it open until ten, and see that open, like they pick Johnson until ten, and let them drive their own programming on that. Um, because if it's open till ten, you know, traffic coming and out, people coming and going, it's not a big difference between children or you, youth versus older, maybe less people, probably less presently into the evening, but I'm concerned about tying their hands, if they really build this into something really great, and they might need that extra hour, even for youth on tournaments or something. Um, it doesn't sound like that's their plan on a routine, but I would hate to limit their programming if they can develop with the facility they're trying to provide for Berlin.
Yeah, well, see, June, the, the thing was, is that I understood the testimony was the state had some kind of requirement that they have to stop for youth, that, that's, that's what I was saying, but then they would said that the building was gonna be open till time because of the adults, so.
So then we would.
Six of one, half dozen of another, we're really kind of.
If there's a state requirement, we wouldn't need to add requirements on top of that, they would have to follow those.
Oh, yeah, and it's, that's the testimony that they provided, but yeah, okay, anything else?
So, no. I, if, can I clarify?
Yeah.
I think I can. The notes that I took during the hearing said the last team practice, eight to nine, nine to ten is adult. Ten people at games, approximately.
All right.
Open this.
Like I said, they're, they proposed to open this facility at eight a.m. to ten p.m.
daily, including weekdays, and, um, I believe he said that that last slot of eight to nine o'clock being the coinciding with the state regulation. Um, and as a point of clarification, you can coincide with, that you can choose the hours if you said to coincide with the state regulation, if you had it at, let's say, you chose that hour of nine o'clock, if that's what the state says, then that would prevail in your special permit for the application, should the state regulations change, unless they came back for modification.
Your notes indicate that that's on weekends too, because I thought that there weren't going to be hours for you longer. Everyone in middle.
I wrote, including weekends.
Yeah.
That's what I wrote. I'm not realist, but I think I could, and we could find that for you, but that's what I wrote down.
Yes, yeah, I had, I had a question with this thing, I was just, for, I don't know. But just, just sort of just, the other thing I wanted to add on to your, um, memory, watching, second or whatever, is that, just taking into consideration the waters as far as, um, sign, uh, light, focusing lights to ensure that they don't impact the neighbors, and also in the sound or whatever. Um, hopefully that'll all be regulated, I mean, sometimes folks get out of a, a sports program, they tend to stay outside, especially if it's a nice summer night, they tend to maybe get a little loud and voiceless, and hopefully they'll just be, um, respecting, um, the neighborhood and, um, the fact that they wanna be a good neighborhood, and the neighbors wanted, the neighbors still on it too, so. I think we'll be able to. So then, what else, are you suggesting that, that be part of the condition, don't ask neighbors have any concern of the noise, wet lighting, that they address the, yeah, or come to the town and, yeah, help them with it? Yes.
First by.
And so do we have a motion amended in the second?
When is the hour, then we're doing it from eight a.m. When is the hour going to be? From eight A M. to ten P M.?
Yes, because the kids are supposed to get that in the eight and a half.
Well, I, no. I would love to see it go to nine, but that's okay. Except for Saturday, Sunday, I guess we would push it to ten, but I keep thinking of, you know, a school night, but then again, then you run into summer, so I don't know what you guys wanted to.
I've been around athletic field, right of that with activity, then sometimes parent like to play basketball or do something late at night after the kids are in bed when they lost a tackle. So I think keeping it open till ten is very helpful even families or adults that might participate in that last hour. Anyone else?
On that, okay.
I'll accept the, the.
Vended motion.
Vended motion to eight to 10 and the cross parking lot agreement made to be made between lots, even though it's the same lot, but at the moment right now, we're going to make a agreement on himself. But that's on file that that cross usage is there.
That is on number four.
And all staff, all staff comments, the views, rest.
What do you think?
We're from the PD for traffic calming.
Other, other, yes.
Okay.
That's lighting and.
Lighting noise, hopefully.
Oh, they, they stated on, on the, the lighting, they stated on, on their, uh, black plans that are called inside, that it's not, that's a zoning law, uh, planning officer. Uh, they can go say, hey, the lighting's not staying on the property.
So who's got second on that? Was it? No, 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 but who had the original second?
Excuse me, you have to determine that the parking was, is appropriate for the use, please.
Well, the parking, I don't think we had a problem with.
No, it's just part of, the, the, the parking isn't defined, so you have to determine that the parking is appropriate for the use.
With the letter from the owner.
Cross the.
Right.
Cross signature.
Making it part of the motion.
It could be.
Yeah. Okay, and we got the landscaping, the buffer right out the street.
Bumper's there, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so you amended that one too, right? Okay, so we have the motion. We have lots of conditions, so. Any further discussions? So all those in favor, aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Congratulations. Okay, finally, oh.
He has seated though.
I know, I know, he got defeated, but that's okay. He wanted to show us.
That was, okay, that was Tim and Brian.
That was.
Tim and Brian.
Yeah, Tim, Brian, second and all of them, everyone's happy. Bye, guys. Good luck. Sorry, sorry it was in the process, but we just want to take everything into consideration. Play the gorgeous scene, play the highlight of the building. Then, sure. Excellent school, excellent school, not less, yeah. Forward to. Yeah. Get a card here. All right, terrific. Well, look forward to having one.
There's a question.
All right. Um, that was, that's, that's, okay, so the applications for five sixty, five fifty-four were, that's been continued. Oh, okay, so that's a Peter LaPointe. And now we're over to the special permit for the pole vest for subdivision four, the drive-through in Farmington Avenue. Okay, so we're up to Starbucks. And we got by the. Don't be lonely. Yes, continue, yes. Yeah, they just wanted to give us an update and then they're going to do.
Yeah.
Starbucks. What do we have on Starbucks, people?
Motion approved with all staff concerns, all staff concerns. We have.
We have lots of complaints. We have to do the.
Now, we want to say?
Yes.
By, uh, technical.
The revised eye protection laws, the fencing, landscaping, the. And then, uh.
I think I said something about.
Start.
Something you're talking about.
Yeah, they do. The hours late. Well, do level look.
I don't have any content.
All right.
I wrote it down.
You have to see it. Now, you have to make sure you get the estate fencing. That's got to protect the park. Oh, yes, you got the motions. I'll make, you got the notion to make the motion, go right ahead.
And they want a motion to approve the special permit site plan amendment for Peter LaPointe, subject to staff comments. And with the conditions that light intrusions, if they exist, are addressed to satisfaction of students. Additional screening, if needed, would also be addressed to the satisfaction of staff. Vegetative screening. Um.
She's got the.
I'm more. I'm getting.
I really don't keep.
The hour.
That noise disturbance, if such problem exists, be addressed to the satisfaction of staff. That visible, any visible mechanicals will be subject to additional screening, also subject to the satisfaction of staff. And that particularly along the drive-through area and the town, the volunteer park, installation of an estate fencing, black estate fencing, right?
Yep.
Yep, and those are the conditions I made note and additionally.
Second.
I had an additional screen.
All right. Oh, you had the staff comments. In addition to staffs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, with the also the condition of the county engineer who had comments in technical nature, be addressed to the staff.
And did we have to do anything with the menu board or anything? No, that was.
No, that was, it was mentioned.
Okay.
Um, you did have to, um, defer with regard to the deferral of the parking area in the northwest corner of the lot, if that.
I think they're going to need it.
We should go.
I did discuss that. Because of employees, but you know.
Why don't we just? Yeah, just have them do it.
Just have them do that.
Probably be cheaper to get it all.
Yeah, add that to your motion. Just have them do it.
Yeah, yeah, especially if they have a second license still in there.
So an added condition would be that they just complete the overflow parking.
Yeah, I think, okay. All right, so we have the motion. Do we have a second? Can we do a second? I know. It is, oh, okay, well. involving motion. Okay, for the discussion on that, for all of the favor.
Me.
It's all your decision.
Okay, so. So Ms. Miller, did we negative? Then everybody else is in, but you're more than. It's a way of, uh, second, the greenhouse, favors continued, Christian business, planner common procurement, which you are they. By doing. So I guess maybe she's.
No, no, the meeting calendar, please.
Oh, okay, the meeting calendar.
Please let's check by the town clerk's office and get our meeting room, because if you don't get in the hopper, you don't get the meeting room. You are.
All right, so we're going to be, are we staying with the first and the third, first, the month?
That.
Yes.
I have it pulled up on the screen if anyone.
Easter, long fair, Hanukkah, Christmas. Yeah, um, I think the seats are, except for corrections at the bottom, so it would be January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Oh, thank you.
What is the nineteen? Because we have a nineteenth and two thousand and twenty-three.
Maybe I looked at those.
Okay.
Hold on. It would, it's, it's just, I would think, January twenty-four, one, two, three, eighteen.
Or July, January, I think. Eighteen, yeah.
Eighteen, twenty, twenty-four. And I added to the schedule for, um, no new public hearings will, new public hearings will generally only be scheduled for the first meeting of the month. I'm trying to be creative with regard to managing applications. And I'm wondering, I guess in the past, and I don't really know how it works, the commissioners that have been on the board for a, a longer period of time since I was even on staff. Evidently, there was a time where public hearings were only held once a month, and that would give the, any applicant that four weeks to respond as opposed to that quick turnaround every two weeks, because that really only gives them less than a week to respond. Um, but I don't, and well, we have somebody to check the applications now, and that's what we're striving for, but I don't know, because I don't really know how that was, how that worked. And, and that's up to you to decide if you'd like us to schedule that way.
Well, that happens, we just got very busy, because I was here, because it's in your view, when we used to do the first, first meeting, we had public hearings and then just carried over the second meeting, cleaned up.
Did you have that same public, was the public hearing still opened at the second meeting? Or did you have the public hearing jump to the next public hearing date of the next month?
No.
Generally.
In other words, well, public hearing was like open, but when we went to the public area and we closed it and then we deliberated.
At the next meeting, at the two me, at the, at the regular meeting, you only, right, so that's why I worded it as no new public hearing.
And that was okay, but then we got, we, and things started spilling over the third, so the new month, we had old and new mixed. So that's how, that's what happened. We just got really busy and we couldn't stay ahead of it. Because sometimes you just need information or there was a snowstorm and then all of a sudden everyone was.
It's a good thing it was in a snowstorm.
Well, that, that's why I did put generally on the meeting. The timeline is what has, has commanded this.
I just.
Getting into the ten thirty. And, and whatever we didn't get to, we did the next meeting.
Yeah.
Automatically.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's what we should do, we're not here until twelve thirty.
Well, I think this is just, listen, this is just bad for us, these last two minute meetings, because we've had no control over the flow. That's why I called Maureen, when we start getting these applications, don't even tell them, tell them we're looking at April for a public hearing. Don't tell them they're going to be on the next agenda.
We, we stopped telling them that quite a while ago.
Took up about two hours.
Well, that's.
That's a good thing.
Well, this is a big.
January starts better.
So, so I guess I did the calendar in a little bit of a rush. Dylan noticed that the January meetings are the wrong year as well, so.
The first meeting, it's.
January, I'm doing, no one ever puts the right date on a thing in either month, right? Put the right year when you're signing, but I'm sorry for that. So, so.
Turn is.
So wait, 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 I'm sorry, but can we finish the calendar? You have to actually, you have to adopt the calendar and then.
You have to adopt the calendar. Has a motion to adopt the calendar.
Also adopt the calendar with the.
Thank you. Now, you have a second, second, all right, for the discussion, all of the favor, uh, they were supposed to move, all right, then.
Jennifer, useful there.
No, she just came back. She's looking at him.
We're going home.
I haven't been napping. I have been listening. I'm still here. Yeah.
All right, Chris.
No.
I think so. We're, okay, we're wrapping up here.
I'm very sorry for this.
We did.
You voted on the calendar?
We voted on the calendar.
He's sorry. I just want to let you, have you all be aware that the New Britain landfill, you recall you did a fill permit last year for the New Britain landfill that's north of Demme Road, off Christian Lane. And I think they mentioned at the time, but they are proceeding with a solar field installation project. And some of you maybe recall that the regulations don't allow for grounds, don't allow for ground mounted solar. However, this is subject to Pura oversight, so the zoning regulations would not apply because it's generating. So, so I wanted you to know, but zoning will be, um, well, it's whether or not you would like zoning to submit any comments to the, to Pura by next week on the matter. I think it has typically been something where they do use solar fields, or rather landfills that can't, don't have another use for solar generation areas. And it's not necessarily seen to be objectionable as perhaps on a agricultural fields or somewhere else. It's, it's a way to use a landfill, a closed landfill site, and that would be just my input on it.
Two things, two things on that, the stone gravel place up on the road.
Mm-hmm. Behind it, yeah.
There's still up on the road, okay?
They were dealing with their, their, their encroachment. That's what they told.
And their encroachment of the growing, uh, uh, dog town. They're behind the dog town.
I'll, I'll note that as a zoning issue.
What, the solar panel?
No, the, the, the equipment, the equipment, they, they, they expanded out of their property about a hundred acres more than they got.
Oh.
The, the, the sand, the stone place that's adjacent.
Can we speak to the, 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 I didn't see whatever they, they're all.
And June.
Solar panels then, right, not the ocean. Didn't follow the same height. It's pretty simple to do. All the same route.
This is sure she did, so.
I think the, like, like a sim heart, they're golden hearts off of Episcopal Road and a solar panel.
All right.
Okay, and then, um, in your pack, in your supplemental package, you've got the notice of the litigation on the Little House Living. And, and we, um, also there, we may get an eight thirty G application under as well. That's an affordable housing application because we don't need our ten percent of, of affordable housing by state numbers. No, we don't.
No, that's the town.
I think. Percent requirement, that, remember that threshold set by the state, by the state, so.
They can put a forty story building.
Um, and we are working on getting those training seminars as we've been discussing. Mark your calendars for, there is a March virtual training done by the Fire Association. It's an all-day Saturday seminar that is just, it's, it's power land juice is really what it is. And it is, but it is a extremely informative.
I hope they.
It is being held virtually, it used to be held at Wesleyan every two years, now it's held at. Now this time they're holding it virtually, I think last time they might have, maybe they canceled it, I don't remember. I think they did it virtually two years ago as well, and. It's an eight hour session.
Full day, yeah. But because it's online, it's likely that you're gonna be able to break it up. I would think that you would be able to, you know, access it multiple times.
Um, the, um. And would that, I'm sorry, Jennifer, but do you, does that fulfill the entire requirement, or do they need certain types of, of, uh. Training, is that the?
Um, I, I, I would, I would guess that it is, I will make inquiry about that just to confirm. But, um, I, I would absolutely imagine that it will fulfill, because you, you have to do four hours every other year.
And that's the cycle.
It's, I would, I would guess that if, if it's gonna be an eight, you know, if it's gonna be the traditional eight hour, you know, day that they've typically held. That you probably are gonna be able to carry it over to. Um, because they do allow some of that even with, uh, our C L E, our continuing. You know, legal education, so, um, but I can make inquiry about it, so that you know for certain.
And I think they'll probably, I, I suspect some of the programs that we typically have gone to are gonna adapt to some of the, the requirements. Um, they also have clear, UConn Clear has some classes, um, there's other classes, APA. And it's trying to, um, pull together some suggestions as well, so we're. I'm looking forward to that, and as we have them, we'll distribute them, but that's, this one is set for. It's, it's early March. Yeah, as soon as I, we'll get the invitation very soon. It was announced at a meeting I was at last week, I just don't remember what the date was, they missed. If I look at that calendar, I may remember. Um, I think that's everything I had, I don't know if Jennifer had anything else today.
I, I don't. Um, I think we're all set. Joan, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I, it, you just, we left you speechless, that's all. You're speechless, right? You're speechless.
Um, yeah, I'm speechless. I'm never speechless.
Do you wanna discuss the?
That's not part of my.
We might, we might be putting it, look at an executive session as soon as it's appropriate, we're not sure.
So, no further business, so can we turn at, um, well, hold on. Well, thirty-seven A M.
Have a good night, everybody.
Merry Christmas.